All right, I think we're ready for, you gonna say the pledge with us? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the good will of liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everyone. We'll start with our spotlight school, Weston Elementary.
Is that the video, Wal, correct?
Uh, yeah, you can airplay too.
Yeah, I was asking for a code, but there's no code. We're off to a good start here. Could you please, thank you. Oh, you're amazing. Okay, thank you very much. Job security is like what you said. Okay, um, thank you for having us this evening. Um, we're obviously Weston Elementary and I'm Meg Welch. Um, so our spotlight school for tonight is something, um, I'm going into my twenty-second year of education and wanted to try something new that I'd never done as a teacher and a instructional coach or administrator. So a couple of years ago, I actually sat down with Dr. Olin in my office because I thought if he's on board, then it might be something that I'm willing to, um, trial out at Weston. So this year, we have our first ever class that is looping. Um, so when we go into the what and why of looping, um, I read a lot of articles and, like I said, talked to, um, Dr. Olin to make sure that he was supportive of us trying this at school. And so there's a few things, I'm not going to read everything to you up there, but, um, some obvious things is it builds stronger relationships with students because the teacher goes from one grade level, the teacher and the whole class move up together the next year. Um, so obviously that teacher is going to have a deeper understanding of each child's social and emotional level, also their academic level. So as I started thinking about this, um, one of the big questions is what grade level do you start with? Do you do one teacher? Do you do multiple teachers? Do you give parents and families choice? Um, how do you go about this? So it was one of those that, um, Mrs. Wing actually brought up probably a year and a half ago. She said, you know, I've thought about looping, so that got me thinking, who's someone that might be willing to try this? And one of the pieces of literature said, make sure you start with someone who's enthusiastic about it, who's excited about it, who's willing to take some chances, um, as a professional and with their students' learning. So last year, um, Annie and I started talking and we really didn't make this decision until the final teacher workday at nine a.m. So it was not till the last day. In May, she and I both thought about it. And so, um, as I started thinking about it, these are actually my own idea spills that I went through. I literally wrote on a piece of paper and chicken scratch all my pros and cons. I just sat there and thought about what are the advantages and disadvantages? And so you can kind of see, um, some of them came from the articles I read and some just came from my own thoughts as a leader and a previous teacher. So those are some of them. And I think some of the cons, you know, obviously standards are a big thing. We have new standards this year, so all the teachers, including Mrs. Wing, have to keep teaching the old standards, especially in third grade right now, till we pivot to the new iLearn. So Annie and I only had third grade standards. She had iRead last year as a second grade teacher, which was, which is great going into this year, but also iLearn. iLearn is changing after this year, so she had a lot of learning curves to go through. Um, so at the end of the year, once we decide we're going to do this, I emailed some families and that's who I have here with me today are some of our parents from Mrs. Wing's class. And I gave them the option. I said, you have an option to stay with Mrs. Wing for third grade, or if you have reasons to think you might need a different teaching style or a different classroom atmosphere for your student, please let me know. Hundred percent moved on. So all of them came, um, along with Mrs. Wing and so far it's been a great start to the year. Um, so what it is like looping. At eleven twenty-six a.m., the first day of school, this is the text I got walking through the hallways of Weston from Mrs. Wing. And those are her students already in their reading book buckets. They asked Ms. Wing, they knew the schedule of the day, and they said, okay, we're done. When do we get to start? And they were ready to start the first day of school. So they sat down and started reading, um, within a couple hours of the first day. And so she had texted me to send me a picture, which was heartwarming to me to know that she had some, uh, reassurance of her decision. And then another, um, a parent sent this to Ms. Wing and she, um, texted me one evening, um, just to tell me, it says, teachers have put relationships first. Don't just have students for one year, they have students who view them as their teacher for life. And the parent said, this made me think of you, Mrs. Wing, thanks for all that you do. So her parents have also journeyed on with her, which is great. I added this, I have the privilege of being the leader of Weston, but also being a parent of the looping classroom this year. So my youngest Hudson is in Ms. Wing's class and this is the parent square that she sent to us the first evening. So again, I won't read it all, but, um, she said, if the rest of the year is anything like day one, this is going to be the best year ever. Thank you so much for trusting me with your child for another year. And I wrote her a message. I said, well, now you have me crying. And she said, well, you and I can't text anymore because I'm emotional too. So, so it was just, it's just a really neat position for me to be in this year, to see something that I have dreamed of doing with staff come to fruition, but also, um, having my own child and seeing how he's flourished. So that's been great. Um, so we're gonna take some time and there's a few other people who are obviously here to speak, so Mrs. Wing, um, is that first?
Okay, so I don't know if you can tell from this picture, but on the second day of second grade, we take a picture, holding a sign that says second day of second grade. And so this year, we took one, the third day of third grade. I don't know if you can tell from their body language, but the first day of second grade, they were very compliant. They were, it's in the same order, they're all in the same order. They were very much like, okay, my teacher's telling me what to do, I've known her for two days. This is the third day of third grade with a lot more personality and I let them, I'm like, pick your pose. And the comfort that they had on the first day, they came in and it was like a sigh of relief, like, I'm with my people, like, not just, um, their teacher, but their class too. And then we had a moment where we had a cadet teacher come in and we got in a circle and they were allowed to tell her something about our class. And keep in mind, when most cadet teachers come, the class hasn't been together for very long. So they pass around our little sharing bear, okay? And they share what they want to tell her. And they're like, we're all weird, the first one. The next one, we all accept each other and all our differences. The next one, it's okay if you're strange in here, we still will love you. Like every kid, I was like, I'm gonna like tell her something about like, this is when we have reading. Every single one of them, it was like a social lesson of be who you want to be. So the fact that they are so comfortable to just be themselves because they're not needing new people, it's their people that they grew with last year. The other thing as a teacher is, Mrs. Welch mentioned, we took iRead last year. So day one, when we started third grade, I know who didn't pass that test and I know why they didn't pass the test. So we got to hit the ground running and she kind of shared that picture, but it's because we were sitting, we were going through procedures and they said to me, Mrs. Wing, we already know all this, we know what we're supposed to do, we get our book tub, and we, we know what we're supposed to do and we go sit down and we do this. And I'm like, oh, and they said, are you just gonna, are you gonna let us do it? And I'm like, all right, go try it. And they just did it. And I was like, okay, well, this is a little different because, you know, you have like, as a teacher, if you taught before, you have like this whole like lead-up period, some might call it a twenty-one day fix, you know, like, we gotta learn how to do school. They already knew how to do school and they knew how to do our expectations and they knew how to work with each other. So we just haven't had any dead time, I guess. It's just been, here we go. Now, at the end of the year, maybe these kids will have drained me dry because I've been with them two years, I don't know, we might have a different story, but right now, like, we all just love each other and how weird we are, so. Can we go to the next one?
Yep. Okay, so Mrs. Flynn didn't join us, but I did want to ask Mrs. Flynn, she's the special education teacher at Weston that goes with third grade and how we do it at Weston is I do have my special ed teachers always loop. So right now, Mrs. Martin is kindergarten and second grade and Mrs. Flynn is first grade and third grade. I'm a firm believer that for true parent relationships in the special education world, it is very helpful, especially like what Annie said, for them to know their goals. So Mrs. Flynn has been with some of these kiddos since kindergarten. So, um, I asked Mrs. Flynn, she couldn't be with us tonight, but I asked her what looping was like for her and for her special education students. And so it kind of echoes everything we've said, it's just uninterrupted progress. Um, Mrs. Wing is already familiar with each student's unique needs, um, was able to begin addressing them and just the continuity with structures that are in place. So we're also starting to see that with our special education students and, um, now they have a special ed teacher they're comfortable with, but now they're classroom teachers. So that's been another positive for us. So what I did this year, we usually bring our students and, um, so next, Mrs. Gue will speak for a couple of minutes as an instructional coach, but then we do have a couple of parents that have come to speak, um, about their experience through a, through a parent lens. So, Ms. Gue, I'll let you talk for a couple of minutes.
So, sorry, did you?
You're fine.
Um, I have had the privilege of looping as a classroom teacher as well and so Annie and I had several summer chats, uh, this summer where she would text and call and, um, email, just, hey, I'm thinking about this, what are you thinking? And we were able to really process through the lens of her already knowing all of her students and their abilities and able to look at that through that third grade lens of what could it look like or what should it look like to be, um, with the third grade work. Um, able as well to do some vertical alignment work with Annie knowing the second grade standards really well, we've already had some great conversations where she said, okay, well, in second grade, this is what we did, okay, what does it need to look like for third grade? We were able to do a coaching cycle, um, for STEM, the second week of school, that doesn't happen very often in my role, that teachers are ready to jump in, they're, they more want to get their kids in a routine and give me a little bit of time until I'm ready for that, but, um, Annie was ready to go with that. And we actually have completed, um, an ELA mini coaching cycle as well, where we're like able to look at, um, nonfiction tech structures. And so again, just being able to jump right in and go, um, has been really beneficial for the looping situation, um, with Annie's class.
I think Ms. Kramer, you're first.
Hello, um, my name is Shelby Kramer, um, my son is Grayson, that is, um, in Mrs. Wing's class. So, um, Grayson is, he's always been a little shy, he's not one that he's, he's, he's the true firstborn personality, I should say. So he's, he, if he cannot get it perfect the first time, he is very timid and he's like, nah, it's okay, I'll let somebody else do it. I, I don't, I don't want to do it unless he knows he's going to get it right one hundred percent of the time. But two things, Hudson Welch is his best friend, so he's decided that for two things, the rest of his ever going to be in school, that Mrs. Wing should be his teacher and Hudson should be in his class. So he, so honestly, the hardest challenge, what it was, was when it came to the end of year, he's like, I just, I don't want to leave Mrs. Wing, I, I, I don't, I, I just, she's done so much with me and I just, I love her. And he said that so many times over the whole year. And then the last day of school, he's like, mommy, we were all, everybody was crying, we didn't want to leave Mrs. Wing, like, nobody wanted to leave her. And then, you know, we got, it was like that next week, I think, that we got, um, an email that, you know, Meg sent out and, and I said, great, you get to have Mrs. Wing again, do you want to try someone new or you want Mrs. Wing? He's like, don't ever think you need to ask me that again. Like, I'm always going to choose Mrs. Wing. So, um, she has instilled this confidence in him that I honestly have never seen him, because now he's okay if he wouldn't, you know, he doesn't get it right the first time, you know, I mean, it's like, no, Mrs. Wing said it's fine, I can just try again. I'm like, okay, that's good, you know? So it's always a panic that I have to be perfect and do things so good the first time, but instead you're learning, you can make mistakes, but you've got to keep building off that. So she has been unbelievable for him to learn and, you know, different ways of learning. She knows how, she's just, she gets him and, um, he has opened up huge, which I think some is from Hudson, but it is the greatest, I mean, he's had the best year so far. Um, and even, you know, his first day, I said, you know, hey, how'd it go? He's like, I don't even think I left over summer. And I'm like, okay, that's good, you know? So, um, yeah, it, it's been a huge blessing for him and for us because there's not a whole lot that I really need to even have to help him with homework anymore. I mean, he is just confident enough that he does it on his own and he would be, hey, can you check this for me? Can, can you, can you look at this for me? So she is, she's been unbelievable for him and we're very, very appreciative in our household for her. So for looping, it has been, it, it's been wonderful. So, thank you.
So I have a written statement here. Good evening, my name is Kristi Penelum and I'm the parent of Beatrice Penelum and she is in Ms. Wing's third grade class. And I'm here to speak about the impact of looping from my perspective as a parent of a neurodivergent child. I can remember distinctly receiving the notification that Beatrice could continue with her peers in Ms. Wing into the third grade at the beginning of summer break. The level of relief felt was immense. Of course, we immediately started texting other parents to see what their child would be doing. We were excited to learn that all of Beatrice's classmates would choose to stay together. As the school year neared, conversations changed from, I hope we get the opportunity to speak with Beatrice's teacher prior to the school year to discuss her IEP and any challenges she may face, to, I wonder how everyone's summer was and let's stock up on snacks to take to meet your teacher night. I knew that Beatrice had built a strong relationship with Ms. Wing and her classmates. And I did spend my nights lying awake, wondering if and how she would fit into the class. She was already a part of it. So while we prepared Beatrice for small changes that would occur as a third grader, we knew the transition from summer break to the first day of school would be much easier. As a neurodivergent person, change is challenging and can be overwhelming. However, Beatrice knew what to expect and how Ms. Wing worked based on her experiences from last year. In return, her classmates and Ms. Wing know Beatrice and how she sees the world and thinks. Ms. Wing has had a year to fine tune effective processes to prevent and address Beatrice when she is spiraling. This was evident when Beatrice had a moment during a partner activity and Ms. Wing was able to help her refocus and return to the activity. From an academic perspective, Ms. Wing already knows each of the student's strengths and areas that need a bit more attention. Beatrice can be challenged academically, but carefully, but, I'm sorry, but with careful attention to not overwhelm her. Looping has translated to positive impacts both academically and socially. I see her light up when talking about her classmates and what they're working on in class, even if it is a book that is not her style. As a parent, as a parent, I will always worry about my child, but this year, the worries do not include her classroom. I have no doubt that looping has been and continue, will continue to be beneficial for Beatrice this year.
Thank you. Great. So lastly, of course, we do this all for the students. So I spent some time with some of Mrs. Wing's, um, students and a couple quotes from them are up there. And one of them, the top right, um, this young gentleman said it, um, very well, that he likes about it, he shares his classmates and teachers. Um, the one thing he says that I don't like is that it makes it harder to make new friends because I'm in the same class. So my pros and cons, that was one of my cons, but thankfully we have lunch and recess and I think that, um, the pros right now, as Ms. Wing said, we are very early in the year, but right now, um, I know I chose the right educator for this because Annie looked at myself the other day and she said, the only person that this inconvenience is at any point in time is me. Because she's learning new standards, she had to move classrooms, but she said, all the positives outweigh any of the negatives. So, um, it's been great having this experience. And as a parent and administrator, I am thankful to my families that supported us trying this and for all of you listening, but, um, that's looping at Weston this year. So thank you.
Thank you, thanks everyone. All right, we'll move along now. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We have a requested speaker, I think.
Um, at this time, I'm going to suspend the regular meeting and open up the public hearing. Budget 2025 School Corporation.
Thank you. This evening, we're holding a, uh, public hearing on the 2025 budget, which also includes the 2025 School Corporation Capital Projects Plan and the 2025 School Bus Replacement Plan. Uh, this hearing is being held in part of the budget process as an opportunity of the members of the public to write comments concerning the budget. As it has been in, in the past few years, our overriding strategy for our funds will be to maximize our income and contain our costs. We will continue the process of advertising our budgets slightly higher than where we believe they will be in order to, to, or, in order to maximize revenue. This is because of DLGF, the Department of Urban Finance, will only allow us to reduce our budgets from what is advertised and not increase them. On the expenditure side, we will continue our efforts to streamline and increase efficiency in the operations fund and continue to maximize dollars to the classroom. Overall, this budget is very similar to past year's budgets with inflationary growth factored in. I am happy to answer any questions that the board has. Uh, otherwise, I would suggest to the board to open the floor to public comments on the budget. As per our normal practice, we ask that the speakers state their name and address. The speakers should limit their comments to the matter at hand and there will be a three-minute time limit on comments.
If you have any discussion on comments from the board, I'll open up.
I have one question just before we open it up. On inflationary growth, do you just use a standard measure for that when you're building that into the budget?
So it's a mixture of a standard measure and also, you know, there's been a couple of items that have been a little bit non-standard and so, you know, something that we would buy, you know, on a regular basis and, and we know what that cost is now and, and where it's going, we'll, we'll build that in a little bit more. You know, health insurance, that's a very large inflationary number right now, items like that.
Anybody else? All right, at this time, I'll open it up for comments. We do not have any, I will suspend, uh, the budget hearing and proceed to the collective bargaining. Dr. Olin?
Yes, so, um, as this has been required for the last few years, we need to hold a public hearing concerning, uh, collective bargaining to allow people from the community to speak toward that end. And it's actually from SEA three ninety, why we're holding it. And a requirement of them, a member of the Greinfeld Central CTA is here to co-host and that is actually Mr. Russell Wiley this evening. As per our practice, we ask that anyone wanting to speak, state their name and address. The speakers should limit their comments to the matter at hand, which is collective bargaining and, uh, that, that timer would start.
You'd like to speak? All right, we'll move our along and we'll close the, close this, the SEA three ninety hearing and we will continue with the preliminary determination project hearing. Next, the next item on the agenda for the board is to hold a preliminary hearing of proposed construction project. If you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed a sheet, which will include your name, address, and after a presentation, the administrators and its advisors, uh, there will be the opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and the topic to be limited to the proposed project under construction. The notice of the preliminary determination hearing was published legally and required. At this time, I will ask Dr. Stroll, or Dan Stroll, to explain the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twenty dash three point one, the school corporation with certain debt, service, tax rate must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminarily determine to issue bonds or enter a lease for a project which has a total project cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings and the considerations of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. Note that this hearing is just the first step in legal process to hear comments. No board action is legally required at this hearing. Mr. President?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stroll. We will now hear from Dr. Olin about the process of determining and communicating the projects to the community and the need for the projects.
Well, sir. Not getting it to load my, there it is, it wasn't loading my second page there. Sorry about that. Basically, the process that we've been following here is we've been looking at the needs that we have as a corporation and seeing that we do have some, some needs and, and we've listed many things that would be on that list, everything from extending the road at McLaren, which we've delayed for a while, to, so upgrades to, to restrooms, to upgrades that we might want to do with some athletic facilities and parking lots, boilers and chillers. We look at the, the budget that we have, the funds available to us and realize we cannot do all those things that need to be done out of the operations fund specifically, so that's what pushes us to look at, uh, what our capacity might be to, to bond. We've obviously tried to do that over the last few years in a way that has been very neutral on our, our tax rate and feel like, uh, the timing is right to move forward with this. Thus, uh, the partnership we've, uh, established with Stiefel to look at, uh, what that impact would be for us. We feel like that's something that we can, can take care of here and maintain this goal.
Thank you. All right, well, now, hear from Nate Day about the process, the projects meet, I'm sorry, here's, let's redo this. We will now hear from Nate Day on how the proposed project meets the needs and just describe it.
As, uh, as Dr. Olin said, we've been looking at the needs of the corporation, uh, for at least the last ten years through, through a process of hiring outside firms to evaluate the state of our buildings. As you know, historically, we've, we've addressed a number of those in terms of, um, you know, needed space for the band program and, and music programs at the high school, expanding the weight room at the high school. You know, these are projects that we did before COVID, starting back in two thousand nineteen. And these are just really continuations of, of those items. A lot of things identified back then were, were projects revolving around infrastructure, the chillers and the boilers in a number of our buildings. We have, we have addressed, uh, probably three quarters of them across the district and as part of this project, we would go ahead and address the last, the last twenty-five percent of those boilers and chillers that are reaching the end of their life. Other items that we have, uh, we, we have an agreement with the city to, to do the McLaren Road extension at Junior High and, and that's one of the needs that's going to be met in this project. Also included in that is, um, you know, some of the necessary items to keep school corporation running, whether it's buses or technology or equipment and furnishings, um, those are items that are also, uh, potentially going to be done within this project. And the last item that we, we talked about were site improvements and, um, not only, um, you know, some of it in the renovation improvement of our school facilities, whether it's out-of-date restrooms or classrooms that need to be renovated for, for new uses, um, and to expand educational programs. Those could be anything from adding bathrooms for, for preschool and kindergarten classrooms, that, that could be addressing old out-of-date restrooms as we did at the GIS Weston Project back in two thousand nineteen as well. Um, and then finally, you know, it's looking at site improvements at the Junior High and high school properties, revolving around playfields and practice fields and tennis courts, the need that we have there is a number of those facilities are, are tired, they're old and they have some, some physical limitations and deficiencies that we would like to address. Also, part of the need that we desperately have, as can be evidenced anytime we have a large event at the high schools, is we have an extreme lack of parking. And so being able to relocate some of those existing facilities and expand our parking is a need that's going to be addressed in, in this as well. Uh, we've been working with a, an architect very specifically on some of the larger infrastructure projects and we'll be bringing and we will be bringing those plans to you at a future date as we move forward through this process.
Mr. Day, if you would continue to discuss Steeple and Nicholas Company Incorporated and the underwriter about the proposed projects will be financed as well as the information about the effects of typical property taxpayers.
Yes, and so, one of the professionals that we engage is Steeple Public Finance, Steeple Nicholas. And they provided a short presentation that's being projected up for you. So this is where we're at today. This is our outstanding debt payment, starting in 2024, moving forward. This is a very informative chart from the standpoint that as we talk about the impact to the taxpayer and where this is going, we have space within our current debt structure to add payments. Next slide. And this is what the current debt service rate projection is. Right now, we're just a tick under 60 cents. We're at a 94 cent total tax rate, but when we talk about just debt service rate, we're just a tick under 60 cents. And you can see, starting in 2025, that does dip down and then dips down again in 32 and 33. So what Steeple is proposing on the next slide is to come back and add a set of bonds, starting with a 2024 GO bond, that'll start payments in 2025. The goal is to maintain that debt service tax rate right around 58 cents. It's actually a smidge higher than that, but also to leave capacity for future projects. So as you can see, we didn't necessarily bring it up to that 58 cents, 58.23 cents, for '25, '26, and then on out into '27, '28, '29, '30, into the future. What we're really talking about is maintaining that tax rate for two years and creating space for another project in the future if needed. And then I believe on the next slide is going to be the details and the legal parameters of these bonds that we need to discuss tonight. The par amount of the bond is going to be $19 million, $50,000. It's going to cost us roughly $300,000 to issue the bonds between the underwriters discounted all the professionals involved, along with title insurance and items like that. That leaves the proceeds available for hard and soft project costs of $18.75 million. And that will go, you know, not only for the actual construction, but, you know, surveying costs and land soil surveys and soil testing and any engineering cost, architect's cost that it takes to build the project out. We're estimating the interest rate to be somewhere between 1% and 6%, depending on the maturity of the bonds. Shorter maturing bonds have a lower interest rate. The longer you borrow money, the more people would like to make on their investment. So that's where that 6% comes in. The maximum term of the bonds is 15 years. As we get into the market, that may go down, but we need to set a maximum today. If we were to take the current interest rate estimate, which is high, higher than even current rates, and we think that there actually may be some rate cuts in the future, and the maximum term of the bond, the estimated total interest cost for this project would be $10.438 million. Again, we expect that to go down. The maximum annual payment is $7.5 million. And again, that's not, that's probably high, but that's where we have to set our maximum at. And then we talk about a maximum debt service tax rate impact. And this is a change in Indiana law here in the last few years, where we have to say, assuming that there was no debt, that there was nothing existing on the books, if we borrow this money, what is the maximum debt service tax rate impact? And we say 34 cents. But as we talked about in the bar chart ahead of time, we're really kind of keeping ourselves at our current rate and letting it fill in as it goes out in the future. As we saw, as that drops off, we get down into the 20 cent tax rate range. So it's possible that we could be putting 34 cents on that, but we're not going to exceed our current tax rate. And so that's why we have that next item, net tax rate increase over 2024 debt service tax rate zero. We're not going to increase the tax rate at all. Couple pieces of additional information that are required now that we have to do two hearings is the school corporation's max annual payments as a percentage of our net assessed value, what, 7836%? Very informative number for everybody in the room. And then our direct and overlapping debt is a percent of our net assessed value. And that's really a conversation about what type of debt we have, which is our direct debt, and what type of debt do other people around us have. And that could be the city, the county, the township, a library, board, a sewer, district, you know, something like that. So it's our debt service versus our direct debt and our overlapping debt. And it's 6% of the net assessed value of our area between us and the other entities who feed into our tax rates. Lots of numbers, happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, we would move on to the public comment portion of the public hearing. And as Mr. Stroll said earlier, there is no action needed to that.
Any questions for Mr. Day? All right, well, now, go back and open the public hearing. Remember, if you'd like to speak, please sign in at the sheet. As I mentioned earlier, we ask you to state your name and address, limited comments to the proposed project and financing. Keep your comments to three minutes. And anyone that would like to speak? Well, if I could, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So move?
Second.
All pairs say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we'll move on to the regular school board meeting. All right, can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting on August 12, 2024, and the executive session August 12, 2024?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on August 12, 2024, as well as the executive session.
A second? Oops, sorry, can you get a second?
Second.
All agree?
Aye.
All oppose? All right, on to claims. Mr. Day?
Yes, including in your packet are your regular claims, your payroll claims, and a construction claim for the auditorium project. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the details contained. A normal amount of claims this month as opposed to last month when we were kind of wrapping up the summer projects.
No comments or questions, gotta get a motion to approve the claim document as presented.
I'm going to approve the claim document as presented.
I get a second?
I'll second.
All agree, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, say? On to financial matters, Mr. Day?
I promise I'm getting done to the time. Including in your packet this month are the actual numbers for July and the nearly final numbers for August. August, we're waiting on a small interest rate settlement, and I'll have those for you in September. But this is, this is pretty close to where we are. We, I also updated some of the projected expenses and revenues as we've gotten into the school year, still based off that 4208 ADM that we'll talk about later. Our educational funding expenditures are based on our beginning-of-year staffing. Our operations fund revenue is unchanged at this time. Cash balances, I continue to feel comfortable with where we're going. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but we continue to be in outstanding fiscal condition.
No more questions for Mr. Day? We're right on to the structural program report.
A hodgepodge of things we're going to share with you today. Before we jump into the actual report, I just want to thank Mrs. Welch for what they shared with us from Weston Elementary School. We've had a number of teachers who've certainly moved from one grade level to the next and a few students who've moved along with them. But at least in my recent memory, this is the first time that we've had an entire class do that. It's good to see them taking a chance. And Mrs. Welch and I did talk at length about strengths and weaknesses about that, pros and cons, as she put it. The research has been out there for a long time. There are many positive things, but just to see the kids being able to hit the ground running on day one, that excites me about the level of learning that's going to be happening there. So I applaud Mrs. Welch and Mrs. Wing for being willing to do that. That being said, other things we have in the report today initially about the school safety grant? Mr. Carey?
So, first item is our school safety grant. We received award last Thursday on our award for the school safety grant. Typically, in the past, we've asked for the full amount, which is $100,000 matching grant from the Department of Homeland Security. We were told in the email a few weeks before that the number of grants they received exceeded the budget by over $9 million this year. So for that reason, no schools received a full amount of their grant. We received $81,000 of our $100,000 requested. So we will make up the difference of that from our operations fund. It is a matching grant, which we used to pay for SROs and other school safety throughout the district. So it'd be a very similar cost in that sense. We'll use that money, we're happy to get it. That is the update on the school safety grant for this year.
I'm going to stick with Mr. Carey here with some diploma updates. You're probably hearing a lot of conversation about that in the media. So that's not done yet, but the first round of changes did receive a lot of pushback. We're pleased with some of the things we saw in that second round, and Carey's going to highlight that for you.
So you have both the current diploma requirements and the second proposal there to compare in the structural report. Again, this is something that we are still offering feedback on, and I believe they're going to be taking feedback for about the next 30 days. We do anticipate a third and final draft before the December 1 deadline. I am meeting with Secretary Jenner as part of the advisory group on the 17th. So there'll be about eight of us to meet with her to give feedback on what this looks like in the schools and what we'd still like to see changed for that third and final draft. Just want to keep that in front of you so you had it. And if you have any input, we're happy to get that, share that with Dr. Jenner. But we think this is a big step forward for our schools. And I also want to commend the high school and their leadership team. They've done a lot of work to prepare for this so they can be proactive instead of reactive. So we think we're in a great place, and we think we've got some exciting things in store.
We're going to stick with Mr. Carey. You've heard him talk a little bit about curriculum adoption, specifically with health at the junior high school.
So this is a continuation from the August meeting. We talked about the health curriculum adoption that the junior high has gone through. We've been very impressed with their teachers, their department chair, and just their process in general. So our final recommendation would be to approve that new curriculum for use immediately at the junior high, unless you have any questions.
Any comments or questions, gotta get a motion to approve the materials adoptions as presented?
I know that we approved the new health curriculum for the junior high.
Can you get a second?
Second.
All pairs say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say?
And the next thing, we're going to jump to the other end of the spectrum and talk a little bit about the elementary school and IREDA. IREDA being that assessment that is taken that specifically measures the reading skills of our third grade students. And of course, we do that with our second graders as well. Mr. Murray?
Hi, you have in front of you the six-year actual lookback of some IREDA scores for Greenfield Central, each elementary school, our district as a whole, Indiana and the county. So you can see that our elementary students, we landed at right about 89% passing, which is just under 90%, which we really like to hit after our summer administration. So we are still well above that Indian average. But we are very proud of the work that our teachers put in, the staff put in for that 89%. Takes a lot of work to get to 89%.
And before we move on to the second grade piece, obviously, you do see that Eden was at a little over 97%. Well, actually, almost 98% again this year. They will be celebrated down at the State House later this month. Mr. Bowman and one of his teachers will be going down there with me, and they're going to have a little celebration. The state has put that 95% out there as the goal for all in the state. Obviously, a lot of good work being done in all four of our schools, but Eden's going to get to do something a little bit special here in a couple of weeks.
That's awesome.
The second thing that I had was, you heard Mrs. Wing talk about testing second graders. So we gave all second graders the first time the IREDA assessment last school year. And we had 46% of our second grade students that passed that assessment in second grade. So those students will not have to take IREDA this school year. I think the Indiana average was right around 43%, so right above the Indiana average for second grade passing rate. So like I said, those students do not have to take the assessment this year, and we already know who students, which students pass. So that's obviously helpful information for our teachers this year, like Mrs. Wing mentioned. So wanted to mention that.
Yeah, if there are no questions about IREDA with second grade, let's go and talk about our first of three e-learning days coming up on September 17.
So we have some e-learning plans. We have three e-learning plans again this, or e-learning days again this school year. So our first one's coming up next week. We are really focusing on math this first e-learning day. We are diving into some new math materials. So our, all of our K5 math teachers will be receiving some professional development on reveal math. Our sixth grade math teachers will receive some professional development with Invision and along with some high school and junior high, they're participating in that too. Our fourth through sixth grade teachers not teaching math will be deep diving into writing. So that's going to be their focus for their e-learning day. And junior high, junior high is going to be us digging into some ILEARN scores. And the high school will have a, they're going to have options for some professional development for the high school teachers as well.
Just want to thank you for your continued support on these e-learning days. These are valuable for us with our staff. We don't have a lot of opportunities to get everybody together, even though many of our teachers do show up over the summer for some training. This does give us three times during the year we can get everybody together to hit some of these really important pieces. So thank you for your continued support there. Hang on, so we've got just two more items here for you, one of those being the beginning-of-year assessments.
Yes, lastly, we wanted to put together just some beginning-of-year data for you to see, NWA data right off the bat. We took our beginning-of-year assessment, and we went ahead and averaged those K through 8. And we're at the 54th percentile averaged and 57th percentile averaged in reading, so 54th in math. But I know the average doesn't tell you a whole lot, but we're above that percentile average of right in the means, or right in the middle. So we wanted to share that with you. Also, our K through 3 students take our Amplify Assessment, DIBELS, our early indicator at the beginning of the school year. And what we put together was where we're at percentage-wise of students who are at benchmark or above benchmark at the beginning-of-year assessment. And then I also compared that to where we were last year, so you can see those numbers as well. So we're slightly above where we were last year at the beginning of the year. So that's encouraging data, and our third graders are right on track to be right where we were beginning last year.
And that DIBELS training, or that, well, not only the training, but the DIBELS assessments that we're doing periodically is very important for us. It's not like we want to give our third grade students the IREDA test, and then we're going to be surprised by where they're at. We're progress monitoring each year, kindergarten through third grade, at specific points during the year, so we can't tailor that assessment, tailor instruction to the needs of kids. So it's good to see where we were this year compared to where we were at this point last year. It's good to know we're a little bit ahead of that. But our teachers do use that information to guide that future instruction. And last piece, we've, Mrs. Leclerc is going to give us a little bit of an overview on some student services.
Yeah, we've had a few exciting things happening since our last meeting. We did have Rachel's challenge come to all of our eight buildings, as well as here to this building for Parent and Community Unite. It was very successful, and our grade 6 through 12 students have created some Friends of Rachel teams that'll be doing some work throughout the year. All of our 20 school-based mental health professionals met with a trainer from the DOE and the National Association of School Psychologists to be trained and prepared to be able to respond to any crisis situations. It was a two-full-day training to talk about the mental health pieces that they will possibly need to know in case of crisis, a student death, or something happening in the community or the school, learning how to identify what people need to be addressed and what kinds of services that we can offer as a school-based team. So we're the first school system in Hancock County to do that training. And I know there's already another school system that's getting ready to get that organized. So those are two of the big pieces. And was there something else on there?
Goalbook?
Oh, and we had us, all of our special ed staff was trained in Goalbook to work on specially-designed instruction and writing goals. So they each had a half-day to come to this building of professional development. That's what student services have been up to during.
I think you get a sense that our first five weeks, we've been doing a lot the first five weeks. So the, I guess, the cherry on top there, we had a teacher that was recognized at the Third Annual Educational Excellence Gala downtown Indianapolis at IRT, put on by the Department of Education. That was Emily Weaver, one of our special education teachers. And she received a nice monetary check to go along with it. That's our second year in a row. That's our second year in a row, and last year, we actually had Erin Day that won one of those awards. So it's been a, it's been a good time to be a Cougar.
Yeah, it is. Good. All right. Do it.
Thank you, Ellen. I'll do an encore in October.
So you do have the construction report in front of you, and it just hit the highlights of the work that is being done, specifically starting with that, the auditorium project, and just giving you an idea by contract of the type of work that's going to be happening here over the next couple of weeks. Do draw to your attention on that, get that second page? On the second page, we've been saying all along that we've got some milestone events coming up. We're supposed to be getting the auditorium seating here next week, the end of next week, and then they're going to start removing the scaffolding, which you'll see that second picture there of that next week, which is real important to us. Actually, Greg, go ahead and go back to that first picture while we're talking about that. We have been able to use that entire east-west corridor between the gym and the auditorium. The first five weeks of school, kids were able to come in those glass doors and immediately go into the gymnasium. Glad to say that we can now access about ninety percent of that corridor. We still have the restrooms locked off, and of course, kids can't get into that auditorium box area. Go ahead and go to that next picture, Greg. This is where you're seeing that scaffolding, it's really massive, and this is what they call the dance floor that they've created there, allowing them to work on the clouds. Those clouds are made out of drywall. That was chosen because the sound is much better. Looked at other options, but this has taken many weeks to get done, and honestly, has delayed some of the work getting done because it's taken a little bit longer than they thought it would. Greg, go ahead and go to that next picture. That's, actually, go back. Because this has taken a little bit longer than we thought, we keep hearing in each of our monthly meetings that we were on schedule for that October seventh. It does look like it's more realistic that we're going to be off by a week or two. The good news to that is it does butt up against the fall break that we have, but there is a lot of work that we wanted to get done over fall break. For instance, we wanted to move things from the existing scene shop to the new scene shop. We're still optimistic that that can happen, but we did have a construction meeting last Wednesday where we really had to have some candid conversation with Skilman Corporation. I think they're responding well as are the vendors, at least that's our hope. I was hoping we could get over there for a tour that would show you what that auditorium looked like without the scaffolding, but we're just not quite there yet. So it shouldn't impact any of the performances that we're planning to have in that second quarter, but it does look like we're probably realistic in saying that we're too off.
So I kind of, I had a extensive conversation with Brad Skilman, the owner of Skilman Corporation, who's our construction manager today, and he still, he still feels pretty confident on substantial completion of most of this on October seventh, but he's, you know, we had a conversation today that if we're going to want to get in there, really shoot for the week of October fourteenth to move into the tech layer and some of those items. All along, that October seventh number was really substantial completion, and then, you know, there was going to be testing and commissioning of the HVAC and the sound equipment and the lighting equipment and the LCD screen and a number of things inside the box. So there was going to be some punch list items that kind of drug out in a couple of weeks after that October seventh. But Brad, Brad Skilman felt very comfortable about October fourteenth, us being able to get in there and work, and then punch work happening that week and into the next couple of weeks. We're still on schedule for the seating vendor to deliver and start install without bumping. It just may not have the entire seating area available to them. They may start in the back and in the balcony and work their way forward while we finish up. In this picture, you can kind of see there's the black cloud, purple and white cloud, and then the cloud that you can kind of see through because it's just metal frame frame. That is now, that's from last Wednesday. That today is drywalled, and they've begun finishing that front frame, and they've begun painting that purple and white that's in that picture. But they're probably going to be working on that far north framing cloud closest to the stage while the seating begins. So I know that Mr. Skilman's been here in our meetings before, he's worked with us in the past, and he assured me that he was going to give us a little extra effort here, get us, get us towards that October date, so.
Yeah, I think things continue to progress fairly well. It's my hope that that second week of fall break, if you would like to see that, we can set some tours up for you, allow for you to get in and see that before the larger community does, because it is taking shape very quickly. And just throw in a picture, that right there, Greg, you just finished it there. Picture of the soccer field, we had mentioned in last month's board meeting that we were really close. We did hit the mark for the opening game for both the boys and the girls, and to walk on it, it's not only beautiful, it feels so authentic, and it's something that can be, we'd be very proud of. If you have any questions about anything in the board packet, construction report, happy to answer at this time.
Questions?
One piece of the scaffolding, have it down pretty quick.
It's pretty solid.
Onto new business.
I did, yes, sorry about that. There's really nothing overly surprising here, though we do keep throwing that number out in front of you, where the ADM, or the average daily membership, what it's trending toward. And right now, that number that I'd shared from last Thursday would have been at four thousand two hundred and thirty-four, so it was eleven students less than what I'd reported the month before. But I tell you, we continue to clean those numbers as some schools don't start at the same time that we do, and so they don't request the records. But we think that's going to be pretty close to where we're going to end. And just for some comparison points, I put in there Dr. McKibben's projection was forty-two oh two, the DOE and their projection, what they give us with that education fund allotment was at forty-two oh eight. So we're trending just a little bit above where both of them had said we would be this fall. If it hadn't been for the small kindergarten class, we'd actually be up quite a bit. A kindergarten class being about thirty students smaller was our big surprise so far. Any questions about the attached sheet there, I'd be happy to answer that.
Right now, onto business information. Mr. Day.
Yes, we have two donations this month. The first was to Cougars Cuz Preschool. They received a donation of one hundred dollars from Walmart in the form of a gift card. The gift card will be used to provide emergency clothing for kids in the preschool program. The second is a large donation that we get in the fall through the work of Terry Miller, and she received donations of school supplies with a value of five thousand five hundred dollars, and this is on top of the donation of school supplies we received last month as well. So you can see the list of donors in the attached, in the attached letter. It's a number of our community partners, including Bradley United Methodist Church, Cambria, Dynamic Legacy Planning, which is White and Yakim Law Firm as well, that's the previously reported amount, Greenfield Christian Church, Greenfield Kiwanis, Greenfield Women's Connection, Otter Barn United Methodist Church, Penny Lowman, Preco Materials, Shoe Sensation, and St. James Lutheran Church. And Terry has written a thank you note to all of them. I ask that the board approve these grants and donations as presented. The amount of the opportunities is five thousand six hundred dollars.
You get a motion to approve the grants and donations as presented, and the amount of five thousand six hundred.
Make a motion to approve the grants and donations as presented.
Yes, sir. All favors say aye. All opposed say. Thank you to everyone who donated. Let's go on to school improvement plans.
Give you the cover sheet that just kind of reminds you where we've been historically. Up until last year, every school had to provide a strategic and continuous improvement and achievement plan as defined by Indiana Code. They dropped that requirement last year for most schools. So you do have eight schools that are going to present just a highlight of the goals that they have this year, and then at the end of that, I'm going to ask, after you've had an opportunity to have your questions answered, we would formally approve those so that we can get those submitted to the DOE. So I think we're going to start at the front there with Mr. Bowman.
We're all wondering who's going to go first. Dawn always throws a little loop in there if she has to do this or not, preschool, if I go first or not. But anyway, I'm Mr. Bowman, proud principal of Eden Elementary. Thank you for having me. So just some data, percentage of students that are at or above proficiency in ELA was fifty percent, state average was thirty-nine, and in mathematics, it was seventy-six percent, the state average is fifty-two percent. And as was mentioned earlier, we get to celebrate that we had ninety-seven point eight percent of students pass I read this year, which we are very proud of. As for our school goals, my first goal is Eden third grade students will score at least twenty-five percent higher than the state average on I learn ELA in each of the next three years. My next goal is Eden third grade students will score at least thirty percent higher than the state average on I learn and math in the next three years. Also, school goal number three is that greater than or equal to ninety-five percent of third grade students at Eden Elementary will pass I read. And then number four is all students at Eden Elementary will achieve at least one year's growth in math and ELA as measured by Amplify and/or NWA. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Go to Harris then.
Good evening, Sarah Garland, principal at Harris. I am equally as proud to be principal of my school and the great things that are being accomplished on a daily basis by the staff that takes care of the students in our community. While our scores are not quite where we would want them to be, we still continue to maintain above state averages in all areas, and so we're going to celebrate that and continue striving to be the best that we can with what we have and do well for our community. Some strengths that we have seen from that include, you know, partnerships that we have with our community. Harris is fortunate to have lots of people that love us and take care of us and care about what happens at our fun school, and so they continue to support us, including our partnership with the United Way, where we continue to see another year where we're doing a nice job, my teachers do a great job at identifying the students that would benefit from the services that the United Way offers. And again, we had a hundred percent pass rate with that community organization, so we want to thank them for the work that they do to train up the tutors in our community to support the students and the great work that's happening in our classrooms here, and it's a really great piece. So we're really pleased with that. Continue to be pleased with our intervention programs that we have in place, again, knowing we have, the district has provided us great assessment tools that help us know what our students can do and where they need additional supports, and because of that, we're able to target instruction for our students and be very strategic and specific in which students need certain supports. And our title had a great year again. If you look at the students that were provided supports and how they passed, we had three students that we gave services to entitled not pass in I read, and so we're pleased with those results because that tells us that we are utilizing the resources that you all have provided and that we are providing instruction that our students need and continuing to see growth, and we will continue to strive for that. And then just very intentional efforts to improve attendance and some other areas academically. We continue to vet out what the concerns are, that are barriers to some of our successes, and I have listed those for you in your packet, so we'll continue to strive to be better in those areas and have some great things already in place this year, including around attendance and building some relationships there in our community. The goals at Harris include that the staff is committed to, first and foremost, and I will continue to live by this, I can give you all kinds of numbers, but we are committed to building a safe, nurturing learning environment by identifying any barriers to successful outcomes and meeting student academic and social and emotional needs. They've got to come to school, we've got to love them and care about them and take care of them, and if we do those things, I promise you, we are going to grow them and move them to the best that they can be, and we will make growth. We will strive towards that ninety-five percent proficiency on I read that this day has set, and all students will achieve at least one year's growth in reading as measured by Amplify. But remind the board that one year's growth, depending on where a student starts, does not always equate to passing, but we will continue to give our community the best of what we have and continue to grow our students at Harris. And then students will be reading at or above proficiency by more than ten percent on I learn reading and math, and we will continue to strive towards an eighty percent average on NWA. There's also some strategies for how we're going to do that by, for you with that. Do you have questions for me? Thank you for your continued support, and Harris is a wonderful place.
JV Stevens?
Hi, good evening. I'm Amy Sutton, I'm the principal of JV Stevens. So I'd like to start with just some celebrations from our school year last year. Something that's not necessarily in a school improvement plan that I'm really proud of is that we had a really high teacher retention rate at JV this year. We talk a lot about retaining great teachers, and I'm happy to say that all of my classroom teachers returned this year. So not only was my summer hiring about this big, it really meant that we had a great kickoff to our school year because I've got all my staff returning, so that was wonderful for us. Another high point in our year is JV did have the highest ELA I learn scores in six years. So we had an eighteen percentage increase from last year to this year. So I shared that with our staff a couple of weeks ago at a staff meeting, and they were real quiet, and then they were just going like, we've never been that high in a long time. I'm like, no, guys, we did it! So really, really proud of that, of our I learn ELA percentage pass rate that we're at or above proficiency for kids, so we're really proud of that. We were in, like most of our schools, we also were above the state average in all of our state assessments last year, so great celebrations for our school year last year at JV. Moving ahead, obviously, we went up eighteen percentage points last year in I learn ELA, so I did cut that margin back a little bit, and I'm going to continue to grow those numbers is my hope, so we're aiming to increase at least by five percent I learn ELA. And then in math, I would like to see our scores get up a little bit from last year, so I'd like to see us go about a ten percent increase to get us back in that kind of sixty to seventy percent mark. Obviously, all tier one buildings know what the A mark is for I read, so we're going to continue to strive towards that ninety-five percent. We dipped a little bit at JV this year in I read, but the good news is, is that I feel very strongly about our second graders, as Mr. Murray mentioned earlier, who took the assessment last year. That really has set us up for success in third grade because we are kicking off the ground running. We know where our kids are at, we know what they scored on that assessment, and we're able to dive into that data. So I'm really excited about the potential for us to lead us with our numbers. We're going to get there, I know we are. Couple of things in the how, like I just mentioned, we really dove into that, our second graders from last year, current third graders, and looked at their skill deficits. Obviously, we get the DIBELS assessment. This year, we were able to identify kids' skill sets and put them in groups just to meet that specific need in reading, so we're really excited to see where that can take us. Obviously, we're going to continue to work our high-impact teaching strategies, and then we are excited to get our new math curriculum up and running in the PD that we're going to take there, so. Looking forward to the school year. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Weston?
Back. Kind of very similar to the other tier one buildings, like Mrs. Sutton, we had one new hire in second grade, Ms. Anderson, who you all met last month, but I was excited that all of my instructional assistants returned this year, so that's been helpful to get them going, our interventions and things. So you can see our goals, as you know, the science of reading kind of increased last year with changing some of our reading teaching strategies, and we had eleven percent increase on I learn and English Language Arts, which was great. We really focused on response to literature and writing. Mrs. Keew and I partnered with our third grade teachers, and it really, I think, made a high impact. We had a lot more threes, which is a scale for I learn, so that was very exciting to see, and we're going to start that again here in the next couple of weeks with them. As we focused on reading, our math I learn did take a bit of a decrease, but I am very excited that with the work through DIBELS and our strategic teaching, that we have been able to bring back mass success in all four grade levels this year at Weston. So hoping that will help increase our math I learn scores. Again, we're at that ninety-five percent I read goal. We average about fifteen to seventeen percent increase from our spring testing of I read to our summer retest at Weston the past few summers. So we really dial into those I read scores and use that data to help our kids achieve. So our summer retest has been great the last couple of years. So just to kind of show you the changes in practices, I dug into our data, and what's exciting is our incoming indicators last year on DIBELS, twenty-seven percent were at or above grade level for reading, and we're starting at forty-nine percent this year, which is exciting. First grade, we, last year it was forty-two at the beginning of the year, this year it's sixty-eight percent. So sixty-eight percent of our first graders are already at or above grade level, which is really great, and then second grade was fifty-eight. And then second grade was 58, and then they're at 72 this year. And third grade was at 53, and they're at 65% reading at or above. And we had 55% of our second graders pass I read last year. So we really need to hone in on the other 45% this year, and they already started doing that. So really exciting things at Weston, very proud of my staff, and we appreciate the support you give us. So thank you. Don't know who's next.
G I S.
Good evening, Bronson Curtis, Principal of Greenfield Undermedia. So far this year, we're off to a great start. Talking about last year, scores wise, we were at or slightly above state average for many of our I learn scores. However, we need to see some improvement there. So kind of sticking with the 5% increase in both ELA and math, and we're going to continue on with the things we had in place last year to help see the students grow. So we're going to continue working with the writing revolution to support writing across the curriculum. We're going to continue to touch on high impact strategies and be a little more robust with those. We're moving past just identifying what is a high impact strategy, to actually implementing them and tying them to our student data. Outside of items that we have to support students instruction, we have two areas that we're going to focus on that are non-instructional. One of them is, we're looking to reduce the number of referrals and suspensions. So we're looking at a 30% reduction rate of referrals and 45 reduction rate of suspensions. So we're going to really dig in our T B R I practices. We have scheduled quarterly and monthly meetings with teachers to discuss behavior and be proactive about student behaviors as we start to see needs. And then we would like to finish the year with a 97% or higher attendance rate. Some of you, I know that you've liked the pictures we've shown. So we've got a traveling trophy that the students are excited about. We're going to start having, or we started to have, weekly and monthly rewards for the highest attendance rate. So that's got the kids excited about being there. So so far, off to a great start. Any questions? I'll bring your trophy.
How about Maxwell?
Good evening, Melissa Lowell, you're at Principal at Maxwell. I will start with some celebrations like everyone else is doing. On the first page of my report, I have a line graph that shows our historical data from back from 2019 all the way to our latest I learn testing in 2024. As you can see, we are consistently above the state average. And comparing our 2023 results to our most recent 2024 results, we did see an increase in both ELA and math testing. So that's definitely a celebration. Last year, we spent a lot of time working on our ELA skills specifically in writing. And we did see an incredible amount of growth. When we look at individual students who are meeting or exceeding their growth projection, we increased that percentage of students who met that growth projection by 22%. So that was a big celebration. Our leadership team earlier this year got together and created two goals, one of which is focused on academics. So we want to increase our percentage of students achieving at or above proficiency by 5% in both ELA and math, moving, looking forward to the 2025 school year. We'll continue to work on our writing efforts and those high impact teaching practices as two ways that we'll be working toward that. Our other goal is very focused on attendance. We firmly believe that if students are at school, we need them at school every day. If they're at school, we have a much better chance of helping them, helping them achieve their growth as well. So we wrote a growth goal for our attendance as well. And we're going to work really hard on building those strong relationships with both families and students so they feel welcome, they feel loved and valued, and a sense of belonging at school. And that's through before and after school activities, connections that they have across the school building. So we're being very intentional with how we build those strong relationships there at Maxwell. So those are the highlights. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Junior high.
Good evening, Jim Beaver, Principal, Greenfield Central Junior High. Our, our school improvement plan is driven by a little different process. We remain in comprehensive needs assessment, which is a category Greenfield Central Junior High was placed in, I believe, in 2018, 2019. And it was a product of the differences between Indiana's accountability plan and the Fed's accountability plan. And we had some issues that particular year with our special ed kids. And because of continuing differences between the Fed plan and Indiana's plan, we remain in C N A for maybe perpetuity, I'm not sure. We're trying to find a way out. What that really means effectively is we, our plan is driven by a comprehensive needs assessment, which continues to focus on some of our most struggling learners, our students with disabilities and special needs, and also our free and reduced lunch populations. We've got some great things to report on, and one of the things that I'm happiest most about is we actually attained goal one, which was on climate and culture. And that becomes particularly unique, given some of the unique things that we have going on at the junior high. So in surveying our parents, we had set as a goal a 10 percentage point increase in positive returns in terms of students feeling of belonging and feeling like somebody had their back, as a quote we often use. We actually, and you have the numbers in your executive summary, we actually attained that. That was done by a lot of different strategies. But most particularly, we've been able to reconfigure ourselves back to our middle school roots and work largely in grade level teams. So a group of students will have four core content area teachers that they stay with. In fact, following up on what Weston is doing with looping, 20% of our students actually looped this year as they went from the seventh grade to the eighth grade with our mixed grade level team, who teaches both seventh and eighth grades. And those kids are a bit hand selected so that they can take the advantage of a team that knows how to meet them where they are and move them along. All of these things, I think, helped us achieve our 10% plus improvement in our climate and culture. We're very pleased with that. As we move on to our goal two, it was driven by the needs of our students who receive free and reduced lunch and our special education students. And we targeted that driven by the needs assessment on math in particular. And while I'm disappointed to say we did not attain that math goal, as you look at the data that we presented you, you can see that in English Language Arts, that free and reduced population is increasing significantly in their ability to read and write. We're very proud of that because during the same period of time you've seen that growth, we've gone from 38% students receiving free and reduced lunch to 49 this year. So we're very pleased with that, we're very proud. We're hoping we can translate some of those practices back into the math classroom and engage those students. We're finding that's more difficult because their confidence level just is not there with math. So we continue to have to boost that confidence level. All of our strategies are around attaining these goals. Again, back to our team structure, but also in math, making sure that we're helping kids be able to explain the why, which reflects back to the rigor of understanding math and the foundations of math. So we keep working on that. We will reconstitute that goal in a little different form for next year. My fault, I worded it kind of strange in that we wanted to close the gap. Well, our kids actually gained, but all of our kids gained. And so I actually had them chasing a moving target, which is my fault. We'll change the wording of that goal a little bit, look for a 10 percentage point increase. Our final goal is addressing the mathematical outcomes for all of our students. And this one's been a bit of a tough one for us to chase as well. And you know, an interesting part of that is, our success is working against us a little bit. A good number of our students, about 30% of our students, take a year or greater math than their actual chronological age level. So we have students in our building taking geometry, which for many of us was a sophomore level class. We have a large number of students taking algebra, a large number of seventh graders taking pre-algebra, which means when they are assessed by I learn, they're assessed by standards they would have covered a year or two ago, which puts them a little distinct disadvantage. We struggle then getting the gains we want. We saw those gains when we were administering PSAT. But now that we've gone back to just I learn, we're kind of missing those gains. We do see a difference, though, in the way our kids perform on N W E A, which will meet the kids where they are with the adjustable standards as opposed to I learn. We've also found that I learn tends to test a bit more rigorously. And so some of the strategies that we're working on is actually digging in more deeply with clarity, understanding, and rigor when we, when we ask our kids to engage in their regular classroom assessments as well. So we will reconstitute all three of those goals with slightly different measures for next year because we want to continue working on all of those. Any questions? Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, Nathan Brooks, Assistant Principal of Greenfield Central. So we're in year two of our school improvement plan. The state is changing our diploma requirements. We think we know about where that's going to land. But we still feel confident, even with any changes, that our goals are in the right spot. Because one thing we keep hearing in all our different meetings and lobbyist groups and such is that the graduation pathways, which we refer to as the boxes or the buckets, will still be in place. So for us, that's always credits, so that 95% graduation rate is still that level that we want to hit. We made some changes last year in some of our intervention and support strategies that we felt had pretty good success. And I can't tell you the official number out loud, but we feel our, we know our number is higher this year with graduation rate, not 95% yet. So we're going to double down on some of those activities and keep fighting that to get to 95%. Box two, or goal two, we actually lined them up, is about our project-based learning courses and trying to increase the number of those. So we continue to look at that. In all fairness, that's not an area of struggle for us. Almost all our students tend to, can get a box two relatively easily. We have a lot of opportunities there. Box three, which is where students have to show that post-secondary readiness. The state has changed that over time. We used to use ASVAB a lot, they've decreased that. We have some other cut scores that we can use with SAT, which works for certain students, but not for all. So the other area then is to do a career pathway sequence. And so there are some that are developed that seem to work well within the technical education sphere. But we look to develop locally created ones. We already have the fine arts pathways, so the other goal is to continue to add another. There's a couple out there right now that we are going to seek approval for. There's a JAG approved one that another school uses. And generally, if you can take one from another locally approved and show how you're going to implement that, you can get those approved. There is now an M L L one, a multi-language learner one, which is good for us because we're seeing a growing population there. And it's hard for those students to meet a cut score on an SAT or an ASVAB or do a career and technical education pathway all the way through. So we're hoping to get a state approval there. And then the other big one there, we know there's going to be kind of tracks in the diplomas, kind of a, what they're saying is a college ready, a career ready, and enlistment ready. So we're looking at some employment ready SEAL designation, if we can kind of do an exploratory one, kick it to the state, see what they think. They'll probably tell us to make some adjustments to it. Those are big for us. The waiver rates on caps kicked in last year at 9%. They drop again to 6% this year. So we have to continue to find ways to get through some of these pathways. It's kind of the easiest sequencing for kids to hit that, which then helps the graduation rate as well to get to that 95%. Questions I can answer.
Thank you. Can I skip preschool?
Save the rest for laughs.
Good evening, Dawn Sansini. It's my pleasure to serve as your Director of Preschool and Early Learning. We are not required to submit a school improvement plan, but we did feel it was important to share an update with you. So this evening, I will be giving you a quick overview of our program enrollment, also a new program option with pre-K, and lastly, two of our goals. In terms of our program enrollment, as you know, we added a third classroom here at the 700 building. We're serving 59 students in three different classrooms. At Cougar Cubs East at J V, we have 110 students enrolled in five different classrooms. That's a total of 169 students in our preschool program. And that is definitely up from the middle of the year, which we were hovering close to 150 in December of last year. We do have a waitlist. We currently have 37 students that are in district that have an interest in two, three, or five-day programming. We also have an additional nine students that are out of district that are interested in preschool programming. This year, as Mrs. Welch shared, kind of reflection with our team on serving the needs, preschoolers are anywhere from three to five-year-olds. And so what we found was, at times, it was difficult to serve three-year-olds in the ways that, in the same classroom as our five-year-olds. So we met with our team and decided to create a pre-K option at both locations. That was in a lot, during a lot of discussion and reflection on best practice and how we could developmentally meet the needs of those students. And so Mrs. Harrison here at Cougar Cubs West is our pre-K teacher. And then we also have Mrs. Hale, who is at our Cougar Cubs East location. Similarly, I reached out to each one of those parents. We did set a criteria for pre-K. The criteria included students that would be entering kindergarten for the 25, 26 school year. They would be a returning Cougar Cubs student. And they also would be attending five days per week. And of the students in that, that met that criteria, all of them wanted to be included in those pre-K classrooms. Mrs. Harrison and Mrs. Hale could not be here this evening, but I think it's important for you to hear some of the observations that they have made within this first month of school and how they're meeting the needs of those pre-K students. So first, I'll start with Mrs. Harrison. At West, with our returning students, it has been observed that many, that we are able to dive into curriculum and units right away from the start of the school year. The students have adjusted to being at school and caught onto schedules and routines and transitions very fast. We began the year with students' favorite book series, Pete the Cat. We read Pete the Cat: Rockin' in My School Shoes by author James Dean. The students decorated and designed their own school shoes with various art supplies. Students were very creative in designs, and we may still be finding glitter throughout the room from the project. We continued with the rest of the book series with various engaging activities, including a fun Friday activity of making our own pizzas with Pete the Cat Pizza Party. The Handwriting Without Tears curriculum has been implemented within the pre-K class and other preschool classrooms with exposure to Mat Man. It's a song that teaches how to draw a person. As the Handwriting Without Tears program progresses, it teaches how to write various letters with correct formation of big lines, little lines, and curves. Lastly, we have started small groups in our class with students being exposed to 12 different curriculum focus groups each week, led by the lead instructor and two additional instructional assistants. The daily groups focus on Indiana's preschool standards of English Language Arts, math, creative arts, and fine motor skills. The students' quick adaptation to small groups rotations has been beneficial in exposing more educational pieces than just the standards of the alphabet. The students look forward to the daily changing of different small group lessons and have nicknamed groups Kid Groups. So again, that is from here at West in our pre-K classroom. And then at East in Mrs. Hale's classroom, she said, in pre-K, we have started our artist studies. In August, we spent three weeks reading small blurbs about Pablo Picasso, looking at some of his art and then completing our own art projects. We learned that he was the co-creator of the collage and a sculptor. We made two collage projects and made our own sculptures. The students were very excited to see pictures of Ms. Luis, who is an instructional assistant, with the Picasso sculpture that is in her hometown in Sweden. Some quotes from students include, oh, his dad gave him all his art supplies? That's Pablo Picasso. Look, I made a heart. Through our artist studies, we learn about artists and their art, but we also strengthen fine motor skills by playing with clay, using scissors and markers. We learn to appreciate each other's creations. We use receptive and expressive communication. We explore spatial concepts and much more. Most importantly, we are having fun. Speaking of fun, the pre-K class, along with other preschool classes, are currently exploring fairy tales. We made a fairy tale theater to put on productions of our favorite tales. In our theater, we sell concessions, write tickets, and perform shows. We explore math by recognizing numbers and counting change. We explore language arts by writing tickets, making scripts, and retelling stories we have read. The children have been using paper on clipboards to write the room with fairy tale words. We've also cut up boxes to make signs for our shows using tempera paint sticks. One group of children used blocks to make a bridge and then recreated the Three Billy Goats Gruff using puppets. We've been enjoying the fairy tale stories. Each morning, we read one, and then in the afternoon, we read a mixed-up fairy tale. For instance, Three Billy Goats Gruff in the morning, and then the Three Billy Goats Fluff in the afternoon. I think they enjoy this as much, I think I enjoy this as much as the kids. We can discuss what we think the difference is in the two stories and why that author changed it. So again, a lot of experiences, positive experiences happening in our pre-K classrooms, and that is new programming this school year. And then lastly, our two goals, the first- The first is Cougar Cubs Preschool will continue to increase stakeholder engagement as measured by the number of family events that we plan and the attendance by our families and students. Additionally, the Cougar Cubs preschool team will work in collaboration with the newly-formed Parent-Family Association to discuss school initiatives, gather stakeholder feedback on a monthly basis. And secondly, our preschool students will achieve at least one level of growth as measured on the 12 essential I-Sprout indicators. I-Sprout is the assessment that we use for our students. And those indicators include self-control, self-control strategies, persisting with tasks, social behaviors, responding to questions about text, rhyming words, uppercase letters, object counting, excuse me, sorting and classifying, identifying, comparing, and measuring, tool and object manipulation, personal care, hygiene, and engineering. Lastly, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Lester, our school secretary, for all of her work in implementing a new program for tuition tracking. As you can imagine, with the growth in our program and the variety of flexibility that we offer families in making those payments, it can be overwhelming when you're creating individual sheets to track that tuition. And so we implemented a new program called Brightwheel this year, and it has been overwhelming at times to learn a new system. But it has improved our efficiency and effectiveness. So I do want to thank her for all of her work in collecting those payments.
Could you repeat the numbers on the waiting list?
Sure. Cougar Cubs Preschool West has 59 students.
I guess on the waiting list.
Oh, on the waiting list.
You said 37.
37 in district and nine out of district. A total of 46 students.
All right, thank you.
And obviously, you heard a lot from our eight schools, plus the preschool. We cover so many things with our students from ages three to 18. Those goals change a little bit, tailored to the needs of those students. But you heard a lot of common themes about, you know, at least at the year's growth and a year time, the community engagement piece. And that can look different at each of those levels. The school improvement plan is going to take a little different shape at each of those levels, but you're going to see a lot of commonalities there. We had an opportunity to hear from, from nine of our leaders. Are there any questions that we can answer for you?
Thanks to see.
If not, we'd love to have approval so we can get those submitted.
Can I get a motion to approve your improvement plan as presented? Improvement plan as presented.
I move that we approve the improvement plans as presented.
Can I say?
Second.
All papers say aye. All opposed say nay. Onto contract recommendations, registrations, and leaves and retirements.
One leave of absence, Jan Hacker. ECA recommendations from Megan Coffin, Bill Roberts, and Will Coontz. That would technically be it. I ask that the board approve the personnel report as presented. In addition, allow us to have permission to hire as needed for the rest of the current school year. And of course, we'll bring those names to you at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the personnel reports as presented?
Make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented. In addition, give permission to hire as needed for the 24, 25 school year.
Can I say? All opposed, say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay.
I do believe I have a teacher or two here that's been approved in the past. Bronson, go ahead.
Preschool first this time.
Preschool.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you Samantha Wilkins. Samantha is joining us. She started her career in Northwest Indiana Special Education in the COOP and then spent the last 12 years at Hamilton Southeastern, Hamilton Southeastern School District. This is her 16th year as a special education teacher. We are super excited to have her. She has jumped right in. She made a transition from intermediate grades in special ed right into preschool, but she has done it with grace and has built relationships not only with our students, but also the other teachers in the building. She lives here in Greenfield with her husband and her daughter. So welcome, Samantha.
Welcome.
Okay, I'll be quick. I'd like to introduce Valerie Schroeder. Valerie is going to test from Lawrence Schools, where she's top fifth grade. I believe all of her teachers.
IPS.
IPS. She is at G.I.S. doing Title I, and she's doing a phenomenal job.
Mr. Beaver?
It's my pleasure to introduce three of our new teachers. First of all, I'd like to introduce you to Jill Zaff, who's a special education teacher. We hired Jill from Lawrence Township. I would like to introduce you to Chris Cooksey, seventh grade social studies. We hired Chris from Lawrence Township. And finally, you don't often get an opportunity to have the pleasure of hiring the same person twice, but I did. I'd like to introduce you, Karen, I introduce you again, Karen Edwards, who is teaching seventh grade English Language Arts. Karen was with us, actually with me at G.I.S. She left us, taught at China for four years at the college level, and has come back to rejoin us. Karen Edwards.
Can we go along with the supplemental payment with the psych?
Yeah, we do have an unusual one for you. We have a resolution of the Board of School Trustees to establish a supplemental payment, and this would be paid out to one of our, our school psychologists.
No comments or questions? Can I get a motion for the resolution as presented?
I move that we approve the resolution establishing a supplemental payment.
One second.
All papers say aye. All opposed say nay. All right, the police scouts? Do you have something with them today?
I'm under the impression that they're here to see how a school board meeting runs.
Okay.
Exciting, I'm sure.
242 right here in Greenfield. We have Cohen Burns, who is at middle school. We have Uriah Pollitt, who is a freshman at our high school. And then we had Xander Spurgeon, who is at, is he a freshman? He's a freshman at high school as well. So we're learning about, we're doing communication and citizen in the community. So two of the requirements for those merit badges are to attend either a school board meeting or a town board meeting, you know, learning about government. We're supposed to have, since this was an open forum, public hearing, we were hoping to hear some yays and nays on some of the improvements that you're proposing at some of the, the facilities here in, in Greenfield. But we may attend the 23rd just to see if we get some of those, those, those nays just so we can write down and see how it works. So hint, hint, if anybody wants to play doubles advocate, please do so just for, just for example purposes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right. We move right on to, if there's nothing from the board or from the meeting. Future dates, support dates, Red Light of Gala, Saturday, September 28th. It starts at 6:30. Special session would be September 23rd.